Mr., I'm sorry, Dr. Aldrich.
Present.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
Dr. Emmons. Mr. Escabel.
Here.
Mr. Laborn.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Present.
Dr. Rennie. Mr. Roybal.
Here.
Two members are absent. We do have a quorum.
Would you all join me, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Consent agenda. All agenda items listed with the designation of CA are considered to be routine items by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the governing body so requests and support by two other members is received. Any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
All right. Are there any items a member of the governing body would like to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Seagrave, seconded by Mr. Roybal. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The consent agenda is approved.
Public hearing for a transfer of ownership of restaurant liquor license application filed with the city clerk's office for Pathos Business LLC doing business as Belafoco, 2115 Warren Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming, license currently held by Pennstemon Business LLC doing business as Belafoco.
All right, we'll go out to the audience. Is there anybody in the audience here today to speak to this transfer of a retail, excuse me, a restaurant liquor license? How are you? If you can push that button, turn the microphone on for us, please. Kind of aim it right towards you. There you go, and introduce yourself, please.
My name is Brenna Koswitz. I've worked in the restaurant industry for about eight years now. I'm from Cheyenne. I've worked at Belafoco on and off four years and yeah, and I had the opportunity to buy it.
You're gonna be the new, the new boss, huh?
Yes.
So you work for Chief Copper?
For one month.
There you go. Well, we love that man. Great. Well, we're very excited for you and hope that you are, are do well. Does anybody in the governing body would like to ask a question of the applicant? Dr. Aldrich.
Mayor Collins, through you. I would just like to know, you grew up here in Cheyenne and so as what have your other experiences been in the hospitality industry other than working at Belafoco?
Um, I started when I worked at Panera. I worked as the catering manager and then I went to, Chili's and I bartended there and served there and then went to Bella where I served and I also work in the kitchen. And then I most recently managed at the office and served there as well. And then yeah, now I'm back at Bella.
Well, I am thrilled to see a young person, Mayor Collins, who's willing to stake their claim in Cheyenne and do business here. So the best of luck.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor. Um, when is it? Three, when is the takeover date or when do you take over?
Uh, August 4th.
August 4th? Hey, I would like a small with pepperoni, pineapple.
I'll make it for you.
Okay.
Dr. Emmons, did you have a question? All right, you got the order, right? All right, we wish you very much luck and thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience want to speak to this transfer of a restaurant liquor license? From the governing body? All right, the purpose of the public hearing has been met. We'll sign this item to the finance committee. So next Tuesday at noon in room 104. You'll need to come in and be prepared, okay? Thanks, see you soon. Oh, that's right, we do them here now, that's right. Thank you. Next item, please.
Number seven ordinance third reading amending and repealing multiple sections of chapter 9.24 weapons of title nine public peace and welfare of the municipal code of the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming, relating to the sale, transport, discharge, possession and regulation of firearms to better conform to state statute and avoid duplication with federal law.
All right, July 1st, we had some new laws come into effect and this is our effort to bring our city ordinances into conformance with those new state laws. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to this ordinance? Jennifer, anybody online? Hearing none, Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading and I so move.
Second.
Second by Dr. Aldrich. Comments from members of the governing body. Hearing none, Madam Kirk, would you take the vote?
Mr. Roybal.
Aye.
Mr. Seagrave.
Yes.
Dr. Aldrich.
Yes.
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
Dr. Emmons. Mr. Escabel.
Aye.
Mr. Laborn. Mr. Moody.
Aye.
The ordinance is approved on third and final reading.
Number eight ordinance, second reading annexing to the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming, various tracts of land completely surrounded by current city limits, situat in eastern Cheyenne, generally located south of Delrange Boulevard, east of Dry Creek, west of Whitney Road and north of Charles Street.
All right, we have a city council goal to bring county pockets into the city limits. So this is a city initiated annexation of 38 parcels, 100% surrounded by the city. At this time, we'll go out to the audience. Is anybody here that would like to speak to this ordinance of annexation? If you would, guys, please come forward and introduce yourselves. You talked you into it, huh?
So my name is Trish Morris and
Welcome, Trish.
We, thank you. We own 6212 Laramie Street, which is part of that annexation. I guess some of our big concerns are, and I wrote letters, I do appreciate Dr. Aldrich and Mr. Moody. You guys got right back with me and I appreciate that. Our, our big concern is, you know, we've, like, when we bought that property, it was county and it's not our choice to be moved into the city. I understand there's a proposition to waive the, like somewhere I saw that if ever curb and gutter were going to be put in, that cost would be waived and we'd not have to pay for that. And if you look at the piece that we own, it's an enormous section of curb and gutter and to land that on top of our, the value of our property. So per se, if we were going to sell it, then does the buyer then have to put in curb and gutter? That's a big concern for us because it's, that was a huge cost of that, that definitely negatively impacts the value of that piece of property.
Trish, let's answer that question right off the bat, okay? When we first started this in 2001 as a city council goal, the answer would have been yes, you would have to. But we recognize that bringing people into the city limits because we had a jurisdictional concern, like somebody calls 911, who comes? And if we don't have a, the right kind of response, maybe somebody would suffer from that. So we went through all of our ordinances to make sure that, that we would eliminate as many of those costs as we can. So we consider, when you come into the city limits now, there's no requirement for curb or gutter or sidewalk. You don't have to pave the road in front of your home. You don't have to hook onto city water and sewer unless you want to. We do require you to use our sanitation service because you're in the city limits. If you have a business that's non, you can't do in the city, we grandfather that. So and that for, it's not only for you, but all the heirs and successors for that property. Now, if you were to sell that property, they want to put a fourplex on there and develop it, that changes everything. Then that's a new development. Then the curb gutter sidewalk, those things would come in, but that's with any development that would happen in the county or in the city limits. So really, the only thing we ask you to do is vote for your city council people and, and enjoy your property as you have it now.
So if I were to sell it as is now, not for somebody that wants to develop it, they are not going to be responsible for that.
That's correct.
And then my other concern is kind of being under all that control that the city would have. I mean, you gotta realize that we're Wyomingites, we like our freedom. And nobody tells me when to mow my grass. If you look at that property, it's very well maintained. We mow it. We don't need anybody to tell us to do that and hold our hand for it. So those are kind of some of our concerns too.
Trish, that's, that's fair, honestly. And you know, I think the expectation when you're in the city is that you will mow your lawn regularly. And so it sounds like you won't have any problem with that. But you know, if you were to let your, your weeds grow over your, over your knee and up to your waist and things like that, you would probably get a notice from the city if your neighbors complain that says, hey, you gotta mow your yard. So we do, we do have an expectation that, from our nuisance department, that you would at least keep your property mowed and safe from that perspective, from a fire danger, from the, from vermin, things like that.
Um, I had another question and I left my head was about. Okay, so then are you, are you gonna, oh, in writing? I mean, is there, do I need to have something in writing because five or 10 years down the road, when there are other people on the council, are they going to come in and say, we, we've decided we're going to make you pay for, we're not going to grandfather your rights?
So Trish, we worried about that. So we actually changed the rules. We actually changed the, the city ordinances. So it's, it's the law of the city.
Okay.
So
To grandfather the rights.
So that's a state law. So if, if you have a, a nonconforming use of your property, when we annex your property under city initiated annexation, your nonconforming uses, like if you had a business there or if you had a cow or a horse or something like that, right? As long as you have, you continue to do that, you don't have a 365 day split. Like if your cow died and you waited two years to put a new one in there, once it goes pay on a year, you lose that grandfathered right. So as long as you continually use that, you, you will, you will not lose those rights. The, the cost of curb gutter and sidewalk is not, it's in, it's in city ordinance. So it's not like the mayor could say, you know, I don't like your curb and gutter, you need to replace that. It's in city ordinance. So that's, it, it's the much protections we could give you to try to make this process easier. And, and I can tell you, just a little thing that happened on Ridge Road a month or so ago, we had a fire. And a neighbor called it in, but that neighbor was in a county pocket. So they called the county fire department. And it was a city fire and it was just, it was a delayed response. It was, it just didn't go as well as it could. And so the city council is just nervous about the disjointed response that we sometimes get in these areas where we have city-county interface surrounded by 100%. So that was the goal in 2001 was to try to clean those up as much as we could. So that if there's a 911 call in that area, we know who's going to respond. It's, it's the Cheyenne Police Department, it's the Cheyenne Fire Department. So we don't have those situations where maybe a tragedy would happen because we had a, a miscommunication. And so that was what, that's what started the whole thing. And, but we also recognize that it wouldn't be fair to you guys to annex you and then ask you to spend $100,000 in curb gutter sidewalk, those types of things that just didn't seem fair. So we spent the first year going through all of our rules to make sure that we could eliminate as much of that as we could. Your, your property taxes will go up 5%. You have eight, we, the city charges eight mills, but you have three that goes to the fire district. You won't pay those anymore. So the, the, the net difference will be 5% and in most houses, that's a very small amount. And, and you'll have to use our, our services for sanitation. I think that's about the two most impactful things that will happen to you.
Okay. Did you have?
Good evening, sir. Welcome.
My name is Mark Morse and we've been going through this process for over two years with the county. And I'm, I'm sorry if I come across a little harsh because I feel like we got railroaded by the county because they told us it wasn't ever going to lead to this. And they, they originally just wanted our road. So we went to every meeting for the last two years with the county commissioners. Linda Heath and Buck Holmes were supposedly supporting us and then Troy Thompson told us that, you know, we needed to, you know, do this thing. Let the county have our road because that would be the best thing for us. It's like, we're not children. We know how, we've been taking care of that road for over 30 years. And we paid all the maintenance and everything on that road. And, and we said, you know, we didn't want the county to take it and our neighbors were all pretty much unanimous, other than maybe two of them. One was the guy down in the trailer park and another guy doesn't even live there. So we, you know, we thought, wow, we could, we're, we're together, we're gonna, you know, beat this thing and, but the last vote, they all voted unanimously for the county to take over our road. And then they had the gall to come in and tell us, you guys are not allowed to maintain this road anymore because if you do, we're gonna arrest you or, you know, I'll give you a ticket. Because it's not your road anymore, but we're not going to maintain it. And I just thought that was a terrible, that's why I got an attitude. And, and then this whole annexation, I don't know, I don't know how you guys figure that 100% of us are together on this because my neighbors are not.
Sir, I, I'm not sure that anybody's together on it, but if the, if the, the pocket that you live in is 100% surrounded by the city property, then there's a, a part of the state law that says, uh, once you're surrounded 100%, then the city council can, can bring you into the city limits. Um, and, and that's what we're doing is, it's called a 151404 annexation.
You know what's wrong with that is we moved out there 30 years ago. We didn't want to live in the city. We wanted to live in the county. We raised seven children in that, on that property. And, and that's what most people in, in Cheyenne do. They live outside, you know, they, because they want some room and everything and they want to do things the way they want. And so, you know, and then, you know, we, we sweat, we, there was times where we had struggled to make the house payment, we, but we, we made it and we paid the house off and all that and you know, and then we don't want somebody coming in telling us, you know, what to do now, you know, we figured like we earned that right, you know, and it's, we figured it's constitutionally, you know, right to property, to have our own property and that we didn't move into the city, the city moved around us. And which we had no say in that either. Now we have no say in this. I can't vote for any of you guys. You know, and I think that's just wrong. I feel like it's bullying us.
Well, I apologize that you feel that way, sir. I feel sorry for that, but the next election, you will be able to vote for us and in 2026.
Then by then, you know.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate that. I do.
But I am gonna address the legislature about some of these laws because I don't think they're fair. Down in Texas, they fought some of this. And they had, they beat the, the forced annexation down in Texas. I can't remember the city down there.
They're actually doing something different. They're actually doing de-annexation down there, which is, which is actually a different situation. You're right. Yep, down in the Austin area, I've been reading about that. Yeah. Well, we thank you for being here tonight, sir. And we're not, we're not trying to make your life miserable, but we're trying to make sure that those areas are, are safer. So if you have a medical emergency.
Never had any problems. We've had fire departments down there. Nobody's ever had an issue.
Yep. You have a medical emergency, though, every one of our fire trucks comes with a paramedic and they might just save your life someday. I hope that happens. Anybody else? All right. Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading and I so move.
Second by Dr. Emmons. Comments from members of the governing body.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Aldrich.
Mayor Collins, through you. I would like to know if the planning department has received any additional comments or phone calls regarding this annexation.
Mr. White, is that you on this one, sir? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor's member, Mayor and members of Council of Connerway Planning and Development Department. For this specific annexation, no, I have not received any additional comments or questions or phone calls in the past couple of weeks while this has been going through council.
Thank you. I did have a, a chance, Mayor Collins, to attend the public meeting and I know that in talking or emailing back and forth with Mrs. Morris, they were unable to attend that night. So appreciate their engagement and reaching out. I understand their frustration. I, I do believe that these, annexing these county pockets is definitely in the best interest of the city. But at the end of the day, I represent my constituents in Ward 3 and have continually voted no if there were people who spoke against the annexation. Explaining to Mrs. Morris that this will probably still pass, but for this evening, I will be a no vote.
Any other comments? Mr. Moody.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. I occur with my colleague from Ward 3. I ran on that unless it's a property owner wanting annexation and if people speak out against it, I will also be a no vote. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we're on second reading. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
The ordinance is approved on second reading with Dr. Aldrich and Mr. Moody voting no.
Number nine ordinance, second reading amending the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne, establishing the zoning classifications of AR agricultural residential, MR medium density residential, HR high density residential, CB community business and MUR mixed use residential for land annexed to the city of Cheyenne, generally located south of Delrange Boulevard, east of Dry Creek, west of Whitney Road and north of Charles Street.
All right, so we have a state law that says when we annex property, we have to give it a zone. And so in this case, we're going to establish a zone that's the closest to what it is in the county. And do anybody in the audience would like to speak to that zone? We'd love to hear it. All right, Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading and I so move.
Seconded by Dr. Emmons. Comments from members of the governing body on the establishment of the zone districts.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Aldrich.
Mayor Collins, through you. While it may seem dichotomous that I will be a yes vote on this zoning for this area that I just voted no to annex. Once that decision is made, we do have to give it that zone. And so I believe it's in the best interest of those property owners to zone it in a like zone to what it was owned as county. So I will be a yes vote for this, this evening.
Anyone else? Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. My colleague from Ward 3 said best, that's the reason why I vote aye. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. We have a request to establish the zones. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance is approved on second reading.
Number 10 ordinance, second reading amending the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne, changing the zoning classification for land located south of Interstate 80 and west of Round Top Road from LI Light Industrial to BP Business Park.
All right, we have a request to, by the owner to change the zoning from Light Industrial to our new business park zone. It's for 419 acres. What we learned is that our light industrial zone, it's not very flexible. And the business park zone was done with collaboration between leads and our planning staff. And it allows for just a little bit more flexibility in what we can do in those business parks. We'll go out to the audience. If anybody has any comments, questions? Okay, Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Aldrich. Comments from members of the governing body. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? This ordinance is also approved on second reading.
Number 11 ordinance, second reading defining the terms and conditions of employment for sworn officers of the Cheyenne Police Department for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
All right, this is an annual update of our terms and conditions for, of employment for our police officers. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this ordinance on second reading? Hearing none, Mr. Laborn.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve on second reading and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moody. Comments from members of the governing body. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? This ordinance is also approved on second reading.
Number 12 ordinance, second reading to amend the official zoning map of the Cheyenne Unified Development Code for property located east of South Creely Highway and north of Chalk Bluff Road in Cheyenne, Wyoming, changing the zoning classification from HI heavy industrial and AG agricultural to BP Business Park.
All right, we have a similar request from the owner of a property to go from HI and LI to the business park again for the flexibility for leads to be able to bring businesses to those parks. Is there anybody in the audience who want to speak to this zone request? Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Aldrich. Comments from members of the governing body. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? This ordinance is also approved on second reading.
Next item is 16A on page four. Contract modification number one to contract number 8098 between the city of Cheyenne and Fence Track Inc. Doing business as Full Tilt Services for additional work associated with the Belvoir Ranch Trailhead and Access Roads project.
All right, I think that described it. Is there anybody in the audience wants to speak to this contract modification? All right, hearing none, Mr. Laborn.
Mr. Mayor. The recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve an amount not to exceed $120,556 and I so move.
Was there 50 cents on the end of that, anybody?
I don't see it.
Mayor, through you, sir. Ye- yes, sir, 50 cents.
So it's $120,556.50. Okay. And who's the second, Mr. Moody?
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. All right, comments on the contract modification. Dr. Aldrich.
Mayor Collins, through you. I am curious. My understanding is that this is, we're having to do this modification because the original plan did not take into account the distance from the windmills for safety for those that would be using the trails. And I'm just curious as to how that was overlooked. I mean, the, the windmills have been there, they, they're not new. And how that was overlooked in the original plan and why we're now having to pay an additional $120,556.50 to modify the plan when really nothing has changed, except it doesn't look like we probably had a conversation with the company with the windmills prior to the design.
Mr. Cobb, is that you, sir?
Mayor, through you, yes, through Dr. Aldrich. So ma'am, we did have them review the plan set. They simply missed it. And then we had the operations folks look at it. And when they were out there on the ground and they noticed that we weren't changing it, those access roads were used for their purposes, not ours. We were retrofitting it to our, our, for our use. And we were using their roads for our use. So when we began to look at where the actual roads were, the plan set, it didn't identify every aspect of where all the windmill turbines were. So again, when they're out in the field, next, next area, they're, they're looking at where we are, where we're going to put our signage at, and they noticed that it was too close. So it was just, it was a safety issue if, and it just was an, it was an oversight basically on their part. We, they didn't see it, but I wouldn't even call it that. It's just simply, it, it wasn't part of the plan set. We were showing where it went. They just didn't recognize where, how the close proximity of the access road we were using. Does that make sense, ma'am?
It does.
Mr. Cobb, so are you saying that we're using an existing road? Uh, and because it's becoming a public road, we need to move it further away from the windmills in order to make a, for their safety envelope that they have?
Yes, Mayor, that's exactly it. Thank you. Okay.
Mayor Collins, through you, follow up.
Dr. Aldrich.
My understanding is that there is not a state statute or any guidance that requires those trails or roads, as they were, to be a certain distance from those windmills. And so I'm curious as to how they determine that and if they don't also have some ownership in that, in this modification and change.
Mr. Cobb.
Mayor, through you to Dr. Aldrich. Dr. Aldrich, just to answer your question, as I indicated in finance, each of these turbine and turbine companies have different safety requirements. So it depends on the height of the tower, that the, the diameter of the blade and the main concern is related to being able to lay the blade down if they need to bring it all down to the surface. So they just need a clear distance from that. And then in an association with that, we talked about the ice clearing area. So debris throwing can be several hundred yards away from the turbine. Now, each one of those turbines has an engine that basically recognizes when it's out of balance and, and there's a discrepancy. So it recognizes if the wind speed and the imbalance is there and if it's going too fast or too slow. But as all mechanical things are, they don't operate 100%. So it's a safety factor for them to get the blade down and again, for this throw ice area for the turbine itself.
Dr. Aldrich.
Mayor Collins. I guess I was under the impression when we started talking about this trail system, that it was going to be maintained and would primarily function during warm weather months. I didn't understand from what has been planned that we would have winter activities in that area when these might be throwing ice or snow.
Mayor, Mayor, through you to Dr. Aldrich. So just to be clear, ma'am, the, the whole issue is related to if they have to bring the blade down for maintenance. They want a clear zone area to bring the entire blade down to the surface if they have to, if they have to maintain it.
Mr. Moody?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Uh, thank you, sir. I do have one question. How often do they maintain the wind turbine blades? Is it once a month, once every two months? Is it once month, once every two months or uh, six weeks?
Mayor through you to Council Moody. Mr. Moody, I have absolutely no idea. I am not a turbine expert.
Okay, um, do we have anybody from next era here?
I don't see anybody. Okay. Is Nimacek?
Vicky Nimacek Public Works. They maintain those uh, um, turbines rat- year round. They have an operation center on the ranch, a building with people posted there year round.
Mr. Moody. Anybody else? All right, we have a contract modification. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The contract modification is approved with Mr. Moody voting no.
Next item is eighteen A on page five, voucher report.
All right, is there anybody in the audience or on the governing body that'd like to question anything on the voucher report? All right.
I have one question.
Dr. Aldridge.
Mayor Collins, um, through you. I um, as in looking at the voucher report, I am wondering if the um, deputy city treasurer might be able to uh, let us know how much total was spent this month on the rebranding project for the city.
It'll give me just a minute.
That's, or you can email it to us, but that would be helpful. Thank you. And how much has been spent to date would be helpful as well.
Anybody else on vouchers? How about from the revenue report? Anybody either in the uh, the audience or on the governing body? As long as we have some, we're happy, right? All right. Next item, please.
Eighteen C, State of Wyoming Department of Audit Report and Results of the City Credit Card Usage Audit.
All right, Mr. Mr. Wilson, right? Please come forward. Introduce yourself, sir.
My name is Brian Wilson. I am the Audit Manager for the Public Funds Division, State and Local Section. And I'm here to present the audit that esteemed colleagues Suzanne Moreno carried out of the city of Cheyenne's credit card function. Um, real quick to give some context here, we conducted this audit in accordance with generally accepted government audit standards. Um, the purposes of this audit was twofold, the appropriateness of credit card usage for the city as well as the related internal controls. The scope of the audit was from July first, twenty twenty three to July or June thirty of twenty four, so fiscal year twenty four. Um, a CPA audit was contracted for this time period. However, that was a financial statement audit. This was a performance audit strictly related to the credit card function. The results of the audit, the city of Cheyenne has extensive internal controls governing the use of credit cards, resulting in adequate oversight and no identified inappropriate usage.
Drop the mic. Drop the mic. I like that.
Drop the mic. Then we stand for questions.
Thank you. Anybody have a questions for the auditor? Dr. Emmons.
Mr. Mayor through you. Um, so you said there was two purposes. The first was for appropriateness of processes and usage. What was the second?
The adequacy of internal controls that are related to that usage.
Um, Mr. Mayor, follow up.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and then my second question is, why did we do this? What what was the driving force behind doing this in Laramie County?
Experience, research, and many, many terabytes of data have suggested that credit cards are an area of high risk for governments. So we, and and I believe you're you're experiencing the other side of this audit as well. Um, it's, it's a new type of audit. We have a very limited resource structure here at at the State Department of Audit. Um, I've got about five auditors to conduct audits of over twelve hundred government entities. So this is an effort to maximize coverage and taxpayer uh, dollars. And in a high risk area.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. So there, this was not, I'm asking this question. Was this being done at the request of any of the legislators in the state? Was that why we were going through this process?
Mr. Mayor, through you, please follow policy or procedure here. No.
Okay, thank you.
And Laramie County is first because it's close, right?
Yes.
You're you're across the street and it's easy to start and to see if there's a risk.
Yes.
Appreciate it. Dr. Aldridge.
Collins through you. Uh, I did receive the email that you sent, so thank you very much for that. Um, I am wondering about, um, there were three items that were less significant internal control weaknesses. And so I'm wondering, um, on number three, it says one of two hundred and thirteen transactions lacked a description of the P card module in violation of city policy. And the receipt on file provided itemized transaction was appropriate. Um, I'm curious about the amount of that uh, one transaction um, that was found to not be on the P card module. And then I was also curious about number two, that um, it said five of the two hundred and thirteen transactions that were tested lacked a read a receipt that had enough detail for a layperson to understand. And I'm just wondering if the all five of those receipts were from the same department, if there were any trends that you could identify or that we could be working on correcting um, from that data on number, item number two.
Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Mayor, through you. Um, Dr. Aldridge, Suzanne conducted the audit. Um, if it's okay, I'll have her come up and answer those specifics of that.
Thank you.
And as she's coming up, um, I'd like to provide some context on the the reason for non-significant audit findings being a separate communication is just the fact that we, it's not significant to that sole audit objective. So they're they're a separate communication. So.
Suzanne, welcome back.
Hello, how are you? Um, as far as answering the different departments.
Second, I get you to bring that microphone closer to you there.
Sorry, I'm short.
That's okay. Thank you so much.
As far as I'm opening the the audit programs and get you the the dollar amount, but the um, as far as the departments, I might have to rely on the treasurer's office to get the department. I didn't record that part. And what we did was, um, we picked a sample of credit card transactions and then followed the various steps of internal controls that had been explained to us. One of the policies had been described that any description of the transaction would be entered into the system. Out of all of the, all of the transactions we tested, only one lacked it. Um, overall, there were hmm, there was a lot of movement. You could see it through their um, process for approval that a lot of, a lot of folks take place in all the approval steps. So let me um.
And Suzanne, we had the receipt for that. It just wasn't put in the system, correct?
So the receipt was there. Um, there's an extra step that the city requires to put a description on the transaction. So it's, it's just one extra little step, but the the documentation was there. That's why it became an insignificant because it is an internal control the city applied. But I apologize, this is delaying. May I please email you the
That'd be great.
The details.
I just, if we can learn, Mayor Collins through you, if we can learn something, um, even if these are less significant findings and uh, through this um, audit, I think that it's really important. I think probably the most disturbing is the number one, which was that we have no formal training uh, for our employees who are authorized to use a city credit card. And and I would hope that that's something that we're going to be correcting um, through our human resource policies. So thank you.
Thanks for being here. Yes, Jennifer.
Mr. Mayor, I do have TJ Bartlebort with his hand raised.
TJ, do you have something to add, sir?
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor. This is TJ Bartlebort, Purchasing Manager. Um, to respond to some of Dr. Aldridge's questions about those items that were noted uh, from our folks at the state. Um, we did not see a specific pattern for those five departments that uh, uh, didn't have the description or the information to make a full interpretation based on what was in financials. I think it was just kind of a rad, a random uh, random poll and it was just kind of spread across the board. Um, to your other notes, uh, we have uh, learned some things from our, from this audit and we're putting our processes in place to make sure we get ample training to everybody that's a credit card holder and making sure that the descriptions are easy to read and easy to understand for what has been purchased. So we learned a lot and we're excited to continue forward. Hopefully that answers a little bit. I'm available if you need anything else. Thanks.
TJ, congratulations, though. This is a pretty big audit and for you to get a clean finding like that is uh, shows that there's good controls and you guys are doing a nice job of uh, of maintaining those records. So thank you for that. Does anybody else have anything from the governing body?
I just had one comment.
Dr. Aldridge.
Um, through you, Mayor Collins, I wanted to say that um, having gone through a a rigorous audit process several times uh, in my role at, in my day job, um, not only are they time consuming and um, nerve wracking, but um, it is uh, to have uh, really quite honestly, what would they call less significant findings is I think a great accomplishment considering how much business the city of Cheyenne does. And understanding that the State Auditor's Department, um, I'm sure chose Cheyenne as one of our um, larger cities that represents more taxpayer dollars um, and more risk. So appreciate the hard work by our treasurer's office and um, by our auditors.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you for the report and we'll go on to next item.
Mayor, can we please have a motion to acknowledge receipt of the report?
Mr. Seagriff? Mr. Roybal? The motion is to acknowledge receipt of this report from the State of Wyoming Department of Audit. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The report is acknowledged.
Eighteen D, announcement of a public hearing to be held August eleventh, twenty twenty five at six o'clock PM in City Council Chambers, twenty one oh one O'Neal Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming, and via electronic conference meeting to determine whether compliance of annexation conditions required by Wyoming Statute fifteen dash one dash four oh two exist for about eighteen point sixty two acres of land located northeast of the intersection of Front Terminal Drive and Route Terra Avenue and west of Converse Avenue. Other business.
All right, we'll go out to the audience and see if there's anybody in the audience would like to speak to the governing body under other business. All right, hearing none. How about from the governing body? Anyone?
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Um, I had the opportunity this morning uh, to visit with the Cheyenne Sunrise Lions Club. And um, they would uh, like to remind everyone that they are doing their tour to tone, the tone donut uh, race starting um, on Saturday morning at Cahill Park. And they have ordered fourteen dozen donuts, so they hope that they have lots of people come out to evidently ride bikes and eat donuts. And they're in their ride for sight is on, is on Sunday. Um, but I wanted to mention that. I also wanted to just say that I was uh, really impressed. First and foremost, I think that Cheyenne did a great job of hosting our tourists and our guests um, that came for Cheyenne Frontier Days. There were lots of activities going on. And um, Jason and his crew and Eric and his crew, um, every single parade, I saw him out there. I saw our fire department, our um, police officers. Um, and appreciate their efforts and the extra time they put in um, to welcome our guests to our community.
Mr. Moody?
Good thing, Mr. Mayor, through you. Uh, definitely occur with my colleague from Ward Three for all the hard work, everybody with the city to uh, welcome people for Frontier Days and other great Frontier Days and also um, let's be happy, local one, uh, Brody Cress. So right here from Laramie County made the city of Cheyenne and Laramie County proud. So glad to see a local guy won the uh, saddle buck.
Dr. Remmets.
Mr. Mayor, through you. Um, I just want to recognize Laramie County Community College tonight. Um, the college has recently become a recipient of the Metallica Scholars Initiative and it is Metallica the band. Um, we are one of seventy five community colleges across uh, the state that will receive seventy five thousand dollars um, to tackle quantifiable shortages of skilled labor. Um, specifically around, um, sorry. Uh, what we're going to do is it's around uh, essential systems technology to help train students in electrical, mechanical, environmental, and emergency systems in commercial industry and mission critical um, environments. And they're hoping to train fifty six individuals for the workforce. So like I say, Laramie County Community College is the only college in the state who's received the Metallica Scholars Initiative. This was very exciting and maybe they'll come here. Who knows?
Party's on the plaza. Here we go.
Um, and then, Mr. Mayor, one other thing. On August seventeenth, uh, the Botanic Garden is holding their miniature golf tournament. We have a team from Ward Two, Ward Three.
They're reigning champions, by the way.
Yeah, whatever. It's a new, New Year. Um, we have a team from Ward Three. We have a team from Ward Two. We do not have a team from Ward One. So if they would like to put up a team, that would be great and we'll see which one's the best.
The gauntlet has been laid.
It's been, yes.
Anyone else? All right, hearing none. We are adjourned. Thank you all for so much. I'll sign those for you.